All right, want to welcome everybody to the January 14th, 2016 Regular Meeting for the Guyman City Council. And I've got the wrong page yet. Excuse me. All right. So at this time, I'd like to ask Pastor John Henry of the New Life Christian Center to come up front and lead our invocation, if you will.
Dear Lord, we come here tonight, we just ask that you have your hand of guidance on each and every person that's here. Lord, we ask for wisdom for the council members. I ask that you will touch them and fill them with the wisdom that only you can give them, that they will do what's best for our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Chief Bab, would you lead us to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is approval of the consent agenda.
I've got a question on IT, the Tyler Technologies, as for maintenance and support for $44,245.61. Is that going to blend in with what we're doing with IBTS?
It's the current software that we use. It's Tyler technology. It's the in-code. It's the complete suite of software that we use. And they, in the next year, I mean, this is payment for its straddles a year, but they are looking at reducing that cost possibly by some of the suites we don't use as much as we could or should, and they're looking at whether we could back those off. But currently, that's what we owe.
But is that what we're going to be using when IBTS starts?
Yes. We'll continue to use Tyler technology.
Okay.
In addition to GovModus.
Okay.
But they'll be together.
You have a discussion, motion?
Make a motion that we approve consent agenda item number two. I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Agenda item number three is public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. We've got some folks here. Get up, come up, go ahead. Who are we and what are we going to talk?
My name is Ted Riley. I'm the general manager of KGYN Radio. I like addressing you guys when it has nothing to do with yucca plants, I'll say that. With me are a couple officials from Steckline Communications. If you guys will stand. This is our new general manager out of Wichita, Chris Knight.
I have to come up front so I can get him on camera.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah.
You pick out your best side.
I'm with radio.
This is Chris Knight. He's the general manager of our Steckline Communications Network. And this is Terry Winok. He's the general manager of the Mid-America Ag Network. I know in the past, some people, you guys have said something about Steckline not having representatives. You've got plenty of representatives tonight. We're here because we'd like permission to put up about 15 yard signs across Guyman for a farm and ranch show that we're promoting in Garden City. KGYN is one of the sponsors, and it's sponsored by Steckline Communications and Garden City on January 21st and 22nd. Don't even know if this is the appropriate venue, but I thought I would ask you guys if this is something that we can do.
You probably need...
You're pointing to her.
You're the city manager.
Next week, you need, in the next few days, you need to call Mrs. Meek and make arrangements with her.
You can come tomorrow.
But we appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll have to call code and all, and there may be something about it.
We can't make decisions.
But I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll be glad to see you.
Okay.
Tomorrow, we'll look it up.
We appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for coming. Glad to meet you. Welcome to Guyman. Public, any other public comments and announcements? Agenda item number four is update by Anthony Black of Hornbeak and Black Architects on the new city hall. Want to kind of flower that baby up a little bit.
Evening, Mayor.
Hi, sir.
And Council. Yeah, I thought I got to go camping this weekend, and it was so long, I thought I needed to cool it off. And then, of course, I'm going to Kansas to camp, so I'd like to have it back. I spent the morning, and then the morning, walking with the general contractor, with Wiley Hicks and with Ralph. And this afternoon, I just was antisocial. I stayed up on the second floor, and I did a punch walk, which I'll compile and I'll share with the city manager. And if there's any comments from city staff, they'll get incorporated into that punch, and then it'll be given back to the contractor for them to complete. Second floor looks fantastic. It was nothing but cosmetic. There were no items that I asked for that were anything that was going to take any work, any substantial work. They've got some work to do on the ground floor, and they know that. Wiley Hicks spent the morning trying to update his estimated completion date, and I haven't heard that yet. And I don't know if that's been shared with anybody, but I know he's going to give one more, and it's going to be the final one. But I did spend time walking through, and I've said it every time, I like saying it, but it continues to impress me. I like the way that the space is shaking out, the way it's finishing. I like all of the, all the functions that we incorporated. I like the way that the finishes are working together. The space looks really nice. I can't wait to have counsel in that, in that new space. So I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to walk recently, over the last 30 days since I was here last. I know I didn't get a chance to talk to you last month and this month. I spent it over there being pretty boring. But if there's any comments or questions, I know that there are two lights that they still need to install, so we can make sure those corners are nice and bright. But I'm waiting for those last two lights to be installed in the lay-in ceilings, not in that gypsum board. But otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I went to, walked to this morning and saw you, and I think Mr. Crowe and Mr. King went through today, and I haven't made it through. We need to get over it.
You should see it.
It's really coming along.
I will be back in two weeks, because that's when we're scheduled to punch the next, the ground floor. That's what I committed to. I'd be happy to walk with anybody that we'd want to walk before that. And this evening, I'm going to go out and meet with the people at Northridge Church at 7:00. So I'll stay here until then, and then I'll probably drive to Enid and get some sleep before a long trip to Kansas.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
You haven't been there at all?
Nope.
You're going to love the black and pink towel in the bathroom.
And that's in the business of men.
Avocado green.
I'm looking forward.
Nobody will like that. Well, thank you. Thank you, Tony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's coming along. It's going to be a good addition to Main Street. Agenda item number five is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Lynn Johnson.
Yes. Anthony, weren't you at Draper's for Leadership Oklahoma?
I was.
Well, we're having a reception for Leadership Guyman there tonight, so forget about Kansas. Come on down. In December, the main event that Main Street was involved in was the Chambers Christmas Parade. That was December 12th. We had our Christmas, or December Vital Volunteers Cindy Weaver. I don't know if you guys know her, but she, she comes in every week and helps me there in the office, and so she puts a lot of hours. We had a total of 102 hours and 46 volunteers in December. It's usually about half what we normally do. Upcoming February 9th is our Main Street Guyman Awards evening, and then the Chamber has their Excellence in Ag banquet on February 11th. But pertinent to the city is our February On the Bricks TV show on Channel 2 is going to be at Dale Hotel. I'm working with Kim, so we're going to go through that, and that'll be the show. And then, hoping in March, we'll have the City Hall on Main, as are. And I like to take credit for it, but Sean does all the work. By the way, good for you guys, you've got two people in Leadership Guyman class tonight, Cody Scott and Brock Scroggen. So, good job. It filled up this year, and she had to turn people away, so I was kind of proud of her. Here's your calendar. And then, I wanted... I just saw this right before I came, because I was, didn't want to work, so I was reading some quotes, and it says, "As we lose ourselves in the services of others, we discover our own lives and our own happiness." And I thought that was pretty good to go to a city council, because it's kind of a thankless job. Not nearly as bad as school board or church council, but anyway. Do you have any questions for me?
How many units did you have on your blood draw?
It wasn't mine. It was any-time fitness.
Right. Do you know how many units you've run?
I don't know.
I got at least double for me.
But they gave, you gave two pints?
I gave double, right.
Did it change your attitude at all?
It did a little bit.
Good, okay.
I'm not going any further. Well, any other questions, comments from Lynn? Thank you. I have to apologize, I can't attend the deal tonight, but I think some of the rest of her will go to Draper's tonight.
Well, I figure if we skip that and get there for the food and the visiting, it's pretty good, don't you think?
All right.
So thank you for the excuse.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Artist Incubation. We're throwing pots, I assume now.
Good evening, everyone. One of the things that I kind of want to start by pointing out is, if you'll notice, I kind of changed up the way that this report looks a little bit. Right under financials, it used to say current issues. And to be honest, I kind of got a little tired of coming in with something that said current issues. So I changed that to in the works. So the things that we have coming up, our resident potter, Mr. Josh Hoag, in December actually pulled out a plan that he's putting together to start offering more ceramic classes catered more towards adults. We have our annual art camps every year where the children come in, but he's looking to put together some ceramic classes and possibly some other art classes for the adults. And so I think he's looking at, hopefully, two a month, if he can swing it. So that's something that we're kind of excited about. We're looking to do a little bit of interior remodeling. One of the things that, that I did recently was I built some new art panels within the gallery for hanging art, things like that. They're mobile panels. But we've got the middle section of the gallery that still has exposed pegboard for the walls and things like that. So I'm looking to get those covered and try and spruce it up a little bit. And then, of course, we're preparing for getting all of our trade show style events and stuff in order. We've got one coming up the end of February that we're going to be at. And then, of course, our monthly artist showcases, we do January through October. I already have 2016 booked, and I've got three artists on scale, hopefully, for 2017. So trying to get those up and going. But December, our big thing in December was the Christmas open house on Main Street. It was a huge success this year. We had more vendors than we've had in the past. We had 22, I think, 21 or 22 vendors participating this year. And of course, we did all of our media advertising, local advertising, that kind of stuff. But we had Oklahoma Premier Carriages came up, so we had two horse-drawn carriages going up and down Main Street, and they went from 4th to 6th, and then Main to Quinn. So just kind of this four to five block radius that they went up and down. We had live entertainment. Same gentleman that we had for our miniature art show came back and played for open house. And we called all of the vendors that participated in the open house this year, and the responses that we did get, we found out that the vendors as a whole made just over $15,000 in that one night. So very, very successful night. So we're going to continue to push that every year and just try and make it bigger and bigger. As far as our marketing, some of the things that I'm going to try and change, or add to, I suppose, is I'm going to look at getting an e-newsletter put together, so that when we do our mailings and things like that, it's not just an email saying, hey, we have this going on. It'll be kind of the last month's activities and then the upcoming activities, and so that those that are on our email list can, can better understand what exactly is going on in the gallery, what we, what we're doing, what we've done, where we're headed, and things like that. I will let you know that tomorrow night is our January Artist of the Month, Tori Jansen. She's an elementary school teacher here in Guyman. You guys, I don't know if anybody's ever heard of Panhandle Paint Parties. She's the one that does that. So she's doing a show tomorrow night, and then next Saturday on the 23rd, we're actually having a paint party at the gallery. So again, we're trying to, trying to create more things, get more community involvement and things like that going on, and, and just continuing to try and push our gallery out into the community, push arts back into the community, and kind of get that mindset going, you know, and recreate that, that community of art. So, does anybody have any questions of me? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is discussion, possible action on Resolution Number 16-01A, Resolution Directing Apportionment of the Incremental Generated in the Current Physical Year and Directing Disbursement of the Portion Funds for the Current Physical Year from Tax Increment District Number 1 in the City of Guyman. This is our TIF, TIF district?
Yes, this is the resolution that allows us to take the money that comes to us from the county and pass it on to pay the debt that supported the enhancements of that property.
And we're, this is, we're down to about the last year, aren't we?
We're getting, I believe, this is, I believe, 19 is your last year. But I can...
Is it 25 here?
Oh, it's 25. I thought it was 20.
Yeah. 25. So 19.
I was thinking it was 26, but I didn't know.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, discussion, motion?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution in item number seven. I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Peterson. We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of possible action on Resolution Number 16-02, A Resolution Expressing the City of Guyman's Support of the Preservation of Tax-Exempt Financing. Now, Miss Meek, you may want to elaborate, but I think this is for municipal electric systems of Oklahoma. That's towns that own their own electric services.
There's various organizations that are approaching the legislature to put some sort of cap or limit, or take action on our ability to issue tax-exempt bonds, which is how we fund our major projects, like the water and the sewer. And we, when we issue those tax-exems, we get a much lower rate, so it saves us considerably. And so this is just asking us to state that we want to see those kept like they are in place and not be either reduced or done away with completely.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 16-2. I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion of possible action on Change Order Number 3 for a decrease, decrease of $50,010.83 for the US Highway 54 Main Street pedestrian landscaping improvements, as recommended by Myers Engineering.
Okay, the change order decrease was for striping, for your temporary silt fence for tack coat, reduction in the super paved type 4, the four-inch wide traffic strip, 24-inch wide traffic strip, and traffic symbols. They came in at less, so it reduces the contract amount by 50,000.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Change Order Number 3 to the US Highway 412 pedestrian landscaping improvements.
Taking the motion.
Have a motion in a second.
King.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion of possible action on Approval of Pay Application Number 6 to GCC Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $33,698.05 for US Highway 412 Main Street pedestrian and landscaping improvements.
This is the final pay request. It's the retainage, which is 5% of the total contract. The project has been approved by, and accepted by ODOT. The drainage issues have been researched by Cardinal Engineering, and the drawings that were approved by ODOT don't have any grades on them. So, yes, so the contractor built according to what he wanted. ODOT accepted it, so any fix that we do will be at our expense. This is his retainage. Like I said, ODOT's approved it. He does need to seal, I believe, the stamped concrete, which we were waiting to see whether he was going to tear out to do drainage issues or not. So if you wanted to request that he finish that before you release this payment, that's acceptable. If you have other, any other issues that you wanted to hold him to or, or look at, then we need to make him aware of that in writing.
I'd like to table this until we get, are able to look at some of this stuff a little closer.
I guess the prices of the trees have got to be wrong. It's just got to be.
And I pulled some stuff here. The, in 2012, SAIC was the engineering design firm, and they estimated that each tree would be $1,000 apiece. So, and the bid that was accepted is what this price is. I've verified that those two numbers are the same. The question becomes whether or not the trees that we got match what they said they would be in the drawings, and that's something that somebody else will have to make a judgment call besides myself. So if you want to request somebody to take a look at those and make a formal opinion, I can, I happen to know somebody that can do that. But they need to look at the, we looked at the drawings, but we'll need to look at the specs specifically and anything else before a formal comment can be made.
Can we go back and ask the contractor if that's actually the price they wanted on those trees? I mean, that's just totally ridiculous, the price of those trees.
Mr. Black, come up. You're well versed in this.
Come on down.
This doesn't cost...
You're going to have to pay double for anything that you buy as far as a tree goes, because they build into it that if it dies, they have to replace it. So anytime that we buy a tree from a retail landscaper, we know that we're going to pay double. If we ask them...
Tony, they can't hear you.
Sorry. So you're going to pay double. We have asked people upfront, prior to bid, to give us a tree with no warranty as an option for our cost savings, and it comes in at about half. A large tree, it's got a lot of cost associated, it's a cumbersome element, it's got to be manhandled and put into place, and then it's risky when you plant it, especially if you plant it during the hot months. So they can get to be expensive. $1,000 a tree is not unheard of. We just recently did a project in which we requested trees, and they came in at $1,500 each. They were a little larger than what's been specified, but also there was a lot more nursery trades in Oklahoma City that would be competing for that, so you got a little premium on that as well. I think the big question is, did you get what you paid for? That's, I think that's the question that needs to be, and...
So you're suggesting we research and make sure that the trees are calibrated to the proper size and all that stuff?
Correct.
So would you...
Can you read and do that?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a, just a statement of fact.
Right.
I'm not a landscape architect. I'm not. I'm going to read what I, tell you what I see in the drawings and where I see it, and hopefully there's a spec associated with it that ties it back to a ANSI standard or something that I can pull up and give you a good reference.
And we can verify the, with the local vendor, that that's what that is.
If we go out and buy a tree to put in our yard, we're going to pay that kind of money?
No. No, if you buy the tree, you're going to pay half. If you ask somebody to go buy it, you put at the end of it a warranty, that if the tree dies, that they have to come out and replace it for free. So typically, a land, a commercial landscaper is going to charge the value of the tree plus the labor times two, because he's going to make, he's going to build in at least one loss into his model. And if he doesn't have a lot of competition, he doesn't have to try and keep his pencil real sharp, and he can make sure that he doesn't have a loss in those trees. I've had, I've had projects in which it goes into a really bad August snap, and they lose 75% of the trees, and they have to replace them all at cost. That's why they build that warranty cost in. You buy a warranty. That's what you basically buy.
And I do know he has to replace them, because the day I said one of those died, he says, I have to replace all of them, and I said, well, that's, that's good to know, so.
And most people don't ask. They die, and people don't ask.
So you want to table it and let Mrs. Meek and Tony work that out?
I can talk about it at next council.
Thank you.
Do we need that in form of a motion?
Probably.
You want to make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion, we table it until we get better information. I'll second.
Have a motion, second to table.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson. We have five ayes.
Can I verify we're just looking at trees? That's the only thing you want me to look at?
I believe so.
Okay.
Say that again.
Trees is the only issue that you want me to look at.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only one I can...
And the seal.
And the seal. That's mine.
Because all the other items, it's approved by ODOT.
Right.
It's all been approved by ODOT, but, yeah.
Okay. Agenda item number 11 is discussion of possible action on approval of invoice number 202-6931 to Myers Engineering in the amount of $952 for US Highway 412 Main Street pedestrian and landscape improvements.
Is this what we asked you to look for, Myers?
I hope so.
We thank you.
This is preparing change order two that we didn't accept for drainage and for the resident project representative for December 7th, 10th, and 15. Yep, that's what that is.
Okay.
And, and preparing change order, not change order three, change order three. And review of pay application six. So this is our final payout. They reviewed the change order, and I, we have no more project going on, so I would say that this is our, our final one.
Discussion, questions, motion?
Make a motion that we pay the $952 in item 11. Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second.
Crowe.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 12 is reports and comments from city manager and council members.
I have some, hang on. Um, speaking of trees, we need to discuss what we want to do with the trees in front of City Hall and along the north side of City Hall. They're large and at the end of their life cycle. Do we want to take them down? Do we want to, yeah. Anthony's going to make a recommendation on that, but we talked about it earlier in the process, and now we're at that time. Do we want to do it in Parks Department? Do we want to do it ourselves? Do we want to have somebody do it? What, I mean, what am I going to do?
You know, in this country, you hate to take a tree out, but those have overgrown it, and they're starting to buckle the sidewalk up down there, and I think we need to, I would personally think we need to probably think about taking them out and look at possible replacement, because I think we're going to have to end up replacing...
$1,500 bucks a piece.
Well, if you can dig, if you can dig them up and save them in that concrete, we'd do that. But, but I, it's... But, but I, it's causing problems with the concrete downtown, and, and we've got some trip hazards, and I think we're going to have to take, eventually replace the sidewalks in front of the new City Hall, just for safety's sake.
I agree with you. I think they need to come out because of the sidewalk issue, but I think we better start looking at stuff a lot closer before we make the decision.
And we don't have to replace them. We don't have to replace them. I'll leave that between you and the garden clips.
I think we could hire a couple of kids to cut them down.
Well, no, no, I can't.
I trimmed them a year ago, but taking them out is... What's your, what, well, we can't make any decisions.
That's just, it'll, it'll, it'll be on your next agenda if you're ready to make that decision or what you, I mean...
I think we're ready. If we're, if we're going to make a decision, I'd like to see a cost estimate first.
Cannot the parks handle that though?
Well, take them out then.
Take them down, but, yeah, we can...
We don't necessarily have to replace them.
We have a stump grinder, we don't fully above.
You can start practicing.
Make a bear.
Let Matt have them.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Anthony wants to say something about trees.
Mr. Black.
Are you sure? Again?
He likes you.
Well, we're getting, we want to get our money's worth out of it.
That's right. We don't want you to leave too soon.
Biotechnics was this morning. When you, their, their area is too small, so you need to open up a bigger area before you put anything back, or all you're going to do is hamstring a new tree. So, I will volunteer a recommendation on what you should do, and I'll talk to you about it next.
Thought you were an landscaper.
I'm a, it's a hobby, not a profession.
He knows some people.
Yeah. It's a hobby. Keeps me out of trouble.
Second on the list is, this week I handed out the department head's budgets to them, had them look over it and asked them to bring me any questions or thoughts that they had. Pete didn't take long to show up in my office, and he, he would like to make a request, he would like to make a deal, like to make a trade and trade out his lake aeration of forty-thousand dollars for the disc golf at Cross Park and the power brush for the walking trails at all of the parks. And I said I would mention it to you tonight, and that if you wanted to consider making that change, we could, either you can nod your head yes, and I'll make the change, or I can put it on the agenda, or you can talk about it with him, or whatever you'd like to do. I said you can, what he wants to change, the aeration, the...
The fountains.
Yeah, babbles at the lake, which were forty thousand dollars, two of them for forty thousand dollars, and he'd like to trade that for the disc golf at Cross Park, which is roughly off the top of his head was sixteen, and the power brush was about thirty-five-hundred. So, he'd like to make a deal. And I said I would bring it, and if you'd like it as an agenda item to make a formal, we can do that, or...
Part of the reason, go ahead.
On the...
Disc golf.
Yeah. Asking him to come by, I'm showing the pictures that I took of Hugaton, and it was really simple and didn't look very costly at all, so...
I would think we ought to leave that to Pete and use discretion, myself. That's my opinion.
You what?
I would think we ought to leave that to Pete and her discretion to decide what they want to do.
Sounds good.
If everybody's agreeable.
Yeah, I'd like to visit with him about it.
Okay. Any other?
I've got...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One more. Anthony didn't bring it up. We're going to change our moving date from January twenty-second. Wiley Hicks came in today and said not before the fifth of February. So, LaBona's going to talk with the billing department tomorrow, and whether that's fifth or, yeah, Elaine is really excited, whether that's the fifth or whether that's the twelfth, so she's going to, with her billing and how that all falls out before we make a decision on what day we'll make that move. So, Wiley said he really, one week did not go as he had hoped it would go, or he told them it should go, and he just doesn't want us to come in and them to still be in there working on things, and I said we didn't want an unfinished project, so please finish before we move in. Now I'm done, for real!
Any other comments?
I've got.
I have one.
I was following behind, was, there was a vehicle in front of me, and then one of our city pickups, and I noticed that our brake lights were not working on the city vehicle. So, I'd kind of recommend all of them kind of take a tour around their vehicles one morning, just to make sure everything is working.
And I happen to know who was driving it, so I can make sure that, okay. Okay, inspection.
And I was asked, what was being built beside the old library?
That is for the Dale Apartments, for their tax credits that they got. They had to put in improvements in a park within a mile of the building, and it's a, it's a water feature for those who are in that park. Those small things that come up out of the ground, not big things, just a small area, and we wanted to separate that from the sprinkler system that's on the other side, so we, in case we ever decide to get rid of that piece of property, the park would still remain, and that would be a separate water system. So, they're putting a small splash pad. Pam Wilson, who is Mr. Harmon's daughter, called her. She was absolutely thrilled with the idea. She wants to come down and have her picture taken and everything. It's my understanding that the Parks Board did not know anything about it, and I apologize that Ivan didn't, that Pete didn't even know until after Ivan was gone. So, that information didn't get passed along, and I apparently did not tell council they had decided to do it. It was going to go at Oklahoma Park. Ivan and Pete didn't, well, Ivan didn't think that we wanted that much, it was going to be bigger, and they didn't want that much traffic at that park. So, we found a smaller way to do it at a smaller, in a smaller area.
Does that set us up for any type of liability? I mean, as far as, is it a splash pad? Is it the...
It'll, it'll be small, it's a splash pad, but it'll be a very small one, and it won't be big, like things that come over the top and dump. It'll be like you see in downtown Oklahoma City where you, where you walk over and then things come up out of the ground. So, if small children wanted to play at the park, they probably would enjoy splashing the water, but it's not a huge, like we would put at our school. Had they put it at Oklahoma Park, it would have been a big, large, and the parking at that park is not good, but they had to do something with water, and so we scaled it back for that part to improve that, because Mrs. Harmon had also, she's Wilson, sorry, had also worried that about the water and, and everything at that park, and if we sold that building and what was going to happen, and so she was very happy to have enhancement to her father's legacy, and she's very pleased with that. So, I apologize if I wasn't clear when we spoke with...
What kind of money are we putting into this?
We're not putting any in. We'll pay for the water that runs through it, but it'll be on a timer, and we'll only be open in the, the months that the water can flow, obviously, and then it'll have a, an activation. So, only when people are there and want to see the water move would water...
But I've noticed our workers out there working on it.
That's just for the sprinkler system on the other side. The sprinkler system, I had, it's had a meter, but it's not costing us anything. The company that's doing the hotel came over and is doing the splash pad. I mean, Pete's been over there to discuss what they want and what they don't want and how to do, and Tracy's been there to look at, make sure the valve and the check valve and, and everything, but they're separating the two systems, so if we sell the library, we don't have to go back in and separate the sprinkler system out. So, but no, they're, they're putting it in. We'll, we'll maintain it, obviously, but we would have maintained it at Oklahoma Park, and it would have been a lot bigger there.
Is this going to be a feature that will make selling that old library easier?
I would think it would. It's going to make the park much more attractive, and it's downtown, so...
Are they still thinking about a gazebo that they talked about at one time?
I don't know anything about a gazebo.
Departed.
But we're going to separate that parcel land from the library so we retain ownership.
Currently, the sprinkler system is...
I mean, just the vicinity, either, yes, or no?
And I got one more. Had a citizen come in and wanted to know the, the temporary trailers at the end of Fourth Street.
That's on...
Do they, they, they're, it's on our property.
It's on our property.
Do they have to be planted?
No.
No, okay.
And they have all their DEQ permits, and they may tap these, but they're a temporary structure. It's like when QIS was building their new office building, and we let them put the, the trailer back behind their old offices for a temporary period of time. It's the same situation.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
You already addressed it a little bit on that water deal, but I don't feel like we're really utilizing our boards to the, to the extent we need to be. I was called on that thing too by one of the park, yeah, park board members, and she was real upset. She said, "You know, we used to meet, and we had plans, and, and nobody ever asked us our plans or anything," and, and she really unloaded on me, and I feel like we need to really encourage and be utilizing our, our board members.
It's my understanding the Parks Board couldn't get a quorum very often this year.
They had about four people quit this year, so now we only have five members, and we need to really recruit some people who want to be on the Parks Board, honestly.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, they're very active.
I think we've got to work on all of our boards and restructure and get time set up.
A lot of them don't meet because they don't have...
I went out today to go to the convention and tourism meeting, and lo and behold, I guess I was the only one that showed up.
How was it?
Yeah.
I, I enjoyed it.
Good luck!
Pass all the waters, isn't it?
Sometimes we can't get planning and zoning.
It didn't last very long. Cam, I've had some comments about if we, about offices, offices not being open during the time that we say that we're going to be open, so I'd like to, I'd like to make sure that we are city offices. If we have a time posted, that we'd be open during those, those hours.
Okay, I don't...
It's just a comment.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. King?
They covered it.
I've just got a couple of comments.
I've got, well, comments, whatever. Forgot to mention it earlier on, but one of Guyman's, she's moved away from Guyman some time ago, but she's still one of Guyman's, a big part of Guyman, but, but we have to mourn the passing of Margaret Wright. She was very instrumental in a lot of people's growing up. She taught a lot of, she taught driver's ed back when you taught driver's ed. I didn't have her, but a lot of friends did, and some folks at this table did. Anyway, she left quite a legacy. She was a very philanthropic lady. She was a big supporter of Panell State University, and a lot of other things that a lot of people don't know about. So, she lived a good, a good life, and I think she was ninety-two, ninety-two or ninety-three. So, anyway, she was a good friend and a good lady. This next week, I will be in the city for about three days. I'm going to represent the city at the Oklahoma Aeronautics Association Board Meeting on Wednesday. Thursday, I'm going to the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority, was it, appeared before a year ago on our housing, the new housing. They're very excited about what success that Lance is having so far, and they are, think wanting to do some more things. And then Friday, the mayor's council has their mayor's congress, and it'll be in Guthrie this year. We do a mock legislative session and invite all the mayors and vice-mayors in the state to come. This year's municipal legislative agenda is going to be quite, I guess it's probably going to be pretty intense and quite interesting. The, the items of taxation are coming up quite a bit with the proposal by Governor Warren for the one cent sales tax for, for education. Has a lot of ramifications upon cities in the state of Oklahoma, especially if you live where you're a border state or a border city, and we're a border city on two states. We're at nine, nine and a half percent on sales tax now, and if it goes to, if that passes, we go to ten and a half, and I think it could be derogatory to some businesses, but we'll discuss that later. But anyway, I'll be at that, and if any of you'd like to come, you're more than welcome. It's open to councilmen, no cost to it. Get ahold of me, and I'll tell you how to get your app, get it, get it registered, but it's quite a, it's a good day. We're going to do it in Guthrie this year, because we can't do it in the capital, so we're doing it at the Scottish, Scottish Rite Temple in Guthrie. They've allowed us to use that building, and we're going back to the original Capitol for our deal, and Guthrie's really rolling out the, they're doing some special things. And you'll be getting, I might as well mention, I've been, I was elected at our last board meeting as the president of the mayor's council of Oklahoma, so I represent the mayors of Oklahoma. And that's, hopefully, it's bringing good things to Guyman. So, anyway, that's all I've got. Anybody got anything else? All right, any new business? No new business? We'll adjourn as Guyman City Council. We will reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've already done agenda item number two. Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on awarding bid for the sale of surplus metal from the transfer station. There's a bid tab. I think we had one bidder.
We had an additional bidder, but they did not have the proper insurance with theirs, and in the past, we've had that happen, and Mr. Petty makes, says that that's an invalid bid, and in the past, we've had to, because we posted their bid with the other person's bid, we had to rebid and, and do some different things, so it's not on there because it didn't satisfy the qualifications for a bid. So, Becko Recycling out of Vernon, Texas is twenty-five dollars per ton, and they had the proper noncollusion and insurance documents with theirs.
Do you remember what it was last year?
Yes. Last year was twenty dollars a ton.
So, we can't wait? We can't table it for another bid?
Well, you can, but that makes, that bid, that person now, other people now know what that person's bid is, and that gives them the advantage to bid higher than what that bid.
Price of metal, that's not a bad bid. No, because the other one was complaining about the price going down since it's higher, so... I'd make a motion that we accepted the bid on item number four.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second.
Crum.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action for permission to go out for bids on a new sanitation collection truck.
This is the truck that you approved in the budget. John Ketcherside and Karen have worked together to develop the bid specs with Elaine, and I'm sorry that I don't, Karen was supposed to be here, and she had a family emergency, so it's the type that John Ketcherside...
Brian.
Brian.
I'm sorry, Brian, is for...
John liked it.
Sorry. They, it's for in-town use for the stopping and the starting, and the stopping and the starting, where the other ones we had were more for a highway use, so they break down quicker because of the constant starting and stopping.
I understand he mechanics those quite a...
Yes.
All the time, right?
Yeah. So, he did a lot of research, and he's very pleased with what they have found, and so, or what they've decided to go with, which is very different from what they've done in the past. And I don't want to say what, which it is off the top of my head. Maybe Elaine, do you recall which kind it is? Okay. But it was according to his recommendation.
I make the motion that we approve Ms. Vell for bids for the new sanitation truck.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second.
King.
Aye.
Crum.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action on improvement of payment requisitions to Cardinal Engineering for the following projects. Six point one, here we go.
We got to get him to not send them all at once.
Really? We'll have to read them all.
No.
You can just say...
As listed.
As listed.
As listed under six point one through six point nine. Anybody have any questions?
I want to hear you read them.
I would like to designate the councilmen for a word to read those for me. I would like to designate the councilman to read those for me.
I make a motion that we authorize approval of payment requisitions in item six, six point one through six point nine.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Al Peters.
Aye.
Crowe.
Aye. Aye.
Five eyes.
I make a motion that somebody become an engineer. I missed my calling.
Uh, agenda item number seven, new business. He may have any new business?
Yeah, on the, back to the bidding on the, on the surplus metal. It would have been nice if the local person had been insured and stuff, and we could have done with the local, but.
I agree.
I still think that this makes them be more conscious on doing everything correctly. Doing everything correctly, so.
Okay. One thing underneath this, I'll bring up, nodding on me today, I attended the spirit meeting in liberals a couple of months ago. And in the discussion with a gentleman from Groen Dyke Transport, was talking about the problem we have with semi trucks. That their GPS brings them down Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And he recommended, or the recommendation of the group was, if we need to get that correct, what we've gotta go through is Rand McNally and Maps. They're the ones that handle all the GPS stuff for, for trucking. And I saw a truck a while ago coming down Main Street, and I thought, I'm gonna mention that tonight on the.
And Seaword also has trouble.
Right.
Getting them to their location, yeah.
So that, they, they, they said that was the, the way to go to get your, your mapping straightened out, and we, and they said you'd have to have the GIS coordinates, and I said, we've got that.
Okay.
On most of our stuff, through us and nearby, so. Thought I'd bear that, forget it, 'cause tomorrow I won't remember.
What about bypassing, um, 12th altogether and using Hurlem and, and?
That's a county.
That's more county?
It's a county city road, and it doesn't meet standards and.
It's half and half, and that was discussed, um, during a comprehensive plan, and, uh, the problem is, right now, as it stands, so we, we worked on Hurlem, but when you gotta take them back to the highway there, which is T, I believe, which goes in front of the transfer station, it is horrible.
And then, well, not T, that would be twenty.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, that's cities. I mean, that would eliminate a lot of the big.
Well, part of the problem.
Windmill, everything.
The twenty-fourth was the, the ability of them to make the cur, the curve from, uh, Hurlem and Road to twenty-fourth. Because there's not a big enough radius for trucks.
They do it, but they, they. I mean, there's a reason why we have the great big yellow pipes around our, I think it's a rate regulator station or whatever, or because they were turning so into those and they were hitting them. So I don't, I can, I can, I can talk to the engineer about it.
She knows the guy at the highway department can tell you.
Yeah, it needs to be widened. Twenty-fourth needs to be widened.
Twenty-fourth?
Mm-hmm. But that's a big.
But if, you know, a bypass for the, for all those big trucks would be.
Be nice.
Would be very nice. They, that would eliminate 12th and fit, and sixty-four, I mean, yeah, sixty-fourth.
When you mentioned the yellow pipes, um, back at one time when the car, the guy had the seizure and he hit, about hit a gas deal at the Salier School, and we looked at putting in a bumper there.
Mm-hmm.
And that was not cost prohibitive, or, right now, we couldn't do it. Couldn't we not put in a couple of yellow posts to protect that area?
At Salier?
Temporary?
At Salier School? Um, that'll be a state decision what we can put in that right away, but we can certainly find out.
And when that was presented, it was like, this is a real major deal, you know, so if it, if it's that major, maybe we do need something there, so.
Okay, and, um, I'll have to talk to Mr. Petty about how we change a truck route and what.
'Cause also for those wide loads, you know, we use the city trucks or PTCIs or tri-counties to lift the, lift the lights. And that would eliminate a lot of that.
Um, Mr. King, just say, oh, posts.
So, that's something else.
Business.
I like root.
If not, we adjourn. Thank everybody for coming.